Call the meeting order for April second, two thousand twenty-five. We thought we'd play.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we run down. More dedication. So, as everybody knows, every year we dedicate our town report to somebody who's done a big benefit to the town of Acton one way or another. And so Jennifer, would you like to read this for us?
Can we ask Ms. Mary to join us at the podium?
Yep, Mary, can you come on up, please?
I much prefer being in the back of my quarters. Town of Acton dedicates the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four annual town report to James J. Driscoll, four twelve nineteen fifty-five to eleven eleven, two thousand twenty-four. This year's annual town report has been dedicated to our beloved, dear friend and colleague, James Joseph Driscoll. Jim touched nearly every facet of this town, serving tirelessly with pride, care, and passion. Jim served on several committees and boards, including the school committee, select board, Warren Finance, Capital Improvement Committee, planning board, and cemetery committee. His last gig was as our animal control officer, and it was probably his favorite. It showcased his dedication and love for animals and neighbors as he wrangled loose horses, cows, pigs, dogs, and other family pets with such skill and grace. As one of the three founding members of Neighbors Helping Neighbors, Jim always encouraged residents to reach out and ask for help. He also worked tirelessly organizing and giving help to any person who needed it. Whether it was building a wheelchamp ramp for elderly residents, snow shoveling, delivering food, filling oil tanks, or other care packages, Jim was always there to help. Jim often initiated the call to ensure their well-being and kept close tabs on some of our older residents who lived alone. Jim also began the Spirit of Acton Award back in two thousand and twenty-one, which he personally funded and chose a panel of residents to help pick the yearly winners from Acton's community. Jim loved to work behind the scenes just to see someone smile and to have a chance to make them feel loved and appreciated. We'd like to thank you, Jim, for your quiet, patient leadership while fiercely shaping and nurturing our little town. May we continue to learn and lead by your example. Remember, Acton, you may only be one person in the world, but you could be the world to one person. Please help a neighbor in Jim's memory.
The select board.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
I'm going to give that one a hundred percent. Now, this is between me and her first copy.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to come behind and say that, thank you. So lovely. It's really lovely. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Paulie and Jade appreciate it. I need to see that. Thank you, Tom. Oh, thank you. What a lovely thing. Paulie and Jade were both not able to come, but they will be just tickled by this. So kind. Thank you.
Shout out to all of his friends. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Does any of them want to say something? Yeah, any comments or anything to say in public? If you don't see any, okay, I think we'll move on. Uh, Morton Bill signed?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of the agenda?
We approve the June of the April second, twenty twenty-five meetings.
Make a motion we approve.
All in favor? Uh, minutes of last meeting?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting from three twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor? Hey, town administrator, we agree.
All right, just a couple items for you tonight, and I do apologize. Many of you know that Jim actually hired me back in two thousand and six, so we have had a long rope together, so I appreciate you letting me read that. Okay, first is the sheriff's department update. This is for the month of March. Deputy Samborn's cruiser was out of Acton and Shapley for eighteen point five hours in the previous month. Uh, first is a notable event. They wanted to let you know that the sheriff's department received a domestic violent grant for twenty thousand dollars. They're working with Caring Unlimited to combat domestic violence, so they're working on that. March fourth, deputies had an unattended death of a seventy-four-year-old male. Doesn't look like anything was suspicious. Someone essentially found their father-in-law deceased in a bathroom. March fifth, they conducted a four-hour speed detail on H Road, Acton Ridge, Milton Mills, and Route one oh nine. March seventh, they arrested an individual sixty-three from Shapley for disorderly conduct. March thirteenth, deputies responded to a home on Loop Road for a domestic violence investigation. Female, age twenty, was arrested for DV and assault. March thirteenth, deputy Samborn responded to a car crash on West Road in Shapley. The vehicle struck a guardrail, operator fled the scene, and they have identified the individual and it's ongoing investigation. March nineteenth, deputies responded to a home on Buzzell Road for a male causing a disturbance in the yard. Parents called advising that their son was high on meth and drunk. He wasn't violent, however. No crimes were committed, and looks like they were able to mediate the situation. March nineteenth, deputy responded to the Acton track, uh, trading post for a suspicious male in a vehicle. Individual from Shapley was identified as a subject and arrested for operating after suspension. There is a follow-up investigation from individual forty-one of Rochester from stealing fifty-one hundred dollars from Acton resident. Looks like they took money to do the work and never did it, and they're coming to the end of that investigation. March twenty-sixth, a couple of the deputies responded to a home on Milton Mills Road in Acton for a medical call. An individual thirty-seven from Acton was arrested as a fugitive from justice, charged with possession of heroin, and was transported to the jail. March twenty-sixth, deputies responded to a residence on Route one oh nine in Acton for domestic disturbance. Female, age thirty, was arrested and later closed to bail. Last item, March twenty-seventh, deputies arrest assisted Chaplain Fire Department at a woodlot on Town Farm Road. Fifty-five-year-old male was cutting fire one on his private property. The log pile rolled, collapsed, and luckily he was able to free himself, get nine-one-one, but he was life-lighted out. So that is the report with the names omitted.
Next question, the amount of hours that the deputy has spent out of Acton and Shapley. Seems that's the range of hours. We've seen a whole under them reporting this since January.
Three, three, four months now.
Since January, so it's, you know, fifteen to twenty, in that range. It's kind of.
It was ten last week.
You know, that's, uh, that's a fair amount of hours. What's our thoughts on what's reasonable? What are they doing? Is it, are they?
The deputy could be working overtime, he could be covering a shift, it could be a, you know, a major event that, you know, I think that's going to play a part in this vote that the town of Acton is going to take in June is that, you know, those nineteen hours essentially are going to go on this car if you decide to purchase it. It could just be overtime details that the deputy is choosing to use. Some could be emergencies, but they don't specify what they are, but per the contract, we are allowed to.
Are they on a forty-hour week?
Yes, the deputy works forty hours between Acton and Shapley.
So it's not necessarily.
And this isn't eighteen hours out of our forty. This is in addition.
I understand, I understand. So.
That's a good point about the car.
About ten percent or more of his time is spent outside of the town.
So.
That seems like a lot. What were your reactions? But I'd want to calculate, um, how much that costs us. Because we're paying for him to be here.
Well, it's not part of our forty hours. This is what he's doing outside, as I understand it.
He's got to be with the car.
Well, he's with the car, but.
Not during our forty.
No, I don't think it's part of the forty hours, not get clarification. My understanding is that it's overtime details, what it's costing you is the wear and tear of your car.
Didn't we read it with the sheriff that if he's out of town for so many hours on our side?
That he would make it up. Right, my understanding is these hours are other shifts he's.
He's still getting the forty dollars in for the town. They kind of left town on other calls for eighteen hours.
Unless it was an event that, you know, God forbid a shooting somewhere.
We clarify that.
I will double check that.
That's great, that's fine, that's the case.
That's, that's the way I have a new sheriff. Yep, just discussing.
Okay. A couple other things, um, next Thursday, my assistant Greg and I will be attending the yearly clerks dinner at the Bistro. This year's guest speaker is the State of Maine's Liquor Coordinator, talking about liquor permits, which will be interesting, so. The office will still be open, Lauren will be covering the window, so. And reminder about transportation stickers because I promised John that we would continue to say it week after week after week. You've got to get those stickers, they are turning you away. Doesn't matter if you were the founding father of the transportation, you have to have a sticker. And regarding the transportation, he did speak to the employees. They do not wish to go to town meetings, so it'll be open as scheduled on Saturday. As a department head, John will come for his article. That's all I have.
Okay. Cool, thank you. Finally, is our update, Tom?
Okay, uh, nothing to report on Warren Finance and APA. With regard to finance, I've been continuing to spend my time going over the annual financial report and the budget, in particular, looking at multi-year growth rates on the budget to make sure we understand just how fast it's going or not. That's my report, so.
Ed?
Sure. Transportation we'll talk about later, other than the stickers, like Jennifer said. Mary Grant, I have nothing animal control, he's working diligently to finish up his courses and whatnot that he needs through the state. He's just about there, but he's still working out on that. I haven't heard of anything else that happened this past week, so.
Um, I have nothing to report on the fire department. The recreation committee had their meeting this past Friday, it was a very productive one. They gave a recap of the basketball season, talked about kind of the competitive cheering program and the rec cheering program. And I did just want to recognize the rec director. Another report she had shared that this year was the first year that the rec team got to compete against Berwick, Milton, and Waterborough Borough. Great, they got great feedback from all the towns, so I know that she had to do a lot of extra work to make those connections and just giving our kids more opportunities to compete and, you know, play with other students from other towns. So a shout out to her and the committee for making those connections happen. It was a very successful basketball season, they got a lot of positive feedback from parents about splitting the ceremonies, like each child could have their moment to get recognized without being distracted by other kids playing or doing other things. They also had a really great discussion about the, what's going on with the upcoming season for baseball. They got their back to the survey, they didn't get a lot of, um, survey results back from grades three and up, but they did get a decent amount from kindergarten through second grade, so they're looking into doing clinicals. They had my father Bruce Norde come in and kind of talk about what clinicals could look like, you know, different practices and things that you can do for each grade level. And I do believe that they're going to be scheduling a workshop or another meeting to focus on those clinicals. Their hope is to have that up and running, probably, I believe the timeline is sometime after April break when they get back from this school April break. And then no updates on the Conservation Foresting Committee.
Okay, thank you. John?
Uh, school department had their, uh.
Public hearing.
Budget hearing last Thursday night. Fairly well attended.
Yep, yeah, I was there.
David and Tom were there. Planning board tomorrow had a site walk at the Fairgrounds convenience, which is across from the fair. It'll be at five o'clock tomorrow, and then tomorrow they'll have, they'll have another hearing for them here, or another meeting for them here. In two weeks, they'll have the public hearing for that development. And cemetery committee, I have nothing for right now.
I can add to that, David. Dan Kramer, our IT director, did notify Tom and I that unfortunately there was a glitch with the camera SD card on the school public hearing, so the, although it was recorded by, you know, the presence of the employee, it is damaged and it will not be filmed, it will not be aired. So it's just nothing you can do. Spent two or three hours trying to fix it, and there was an error with the memory card and can't be resolved.
We, uh, Tom and I had spoke to Mr. Ross. He was talking about possibly getting ahold of Dan about, uh, were you there?
Live streaming, yeah.
About live streaming the town meeting at the school. And he's supposed to, he thinks that's a good idea because of certain people don't want to be there for the whole meeting, be able to see as a beat goes because the school is like this year.
What he's saying, clear that?
So I guess so. I just think I throw it out.
Yeah, I forgot about that, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Okay, I'll follow up.
So if it, yeah, so it's not a surprise.
I sort of say.
He really doesn't have, whatever, but.
We're very bad at advice.
So, so this is about like these being people that watch from home and.
Well, when we do the town.
The time they, well, I guess my only, I appreciate it, my only concern is that I feel like it might discourage people from who might otherwise come and vote and participate, they might just stay home and not.
Well, they can watch from home.
They can watch, but that's, I guess that's my, my concern. I appreciate because accessibility, I recognize that's a need and other things, but I also feel.
Well, I understand, I mean, yeah.
Engagement.
I mean, but I guess if you're going to sit at home and watch it, you probably want to be part of it.
You would think.
You know, because if you sit back and can't vote, I guess you yell at the TV.
There's some, there's some folks that really like to see what's going on, but.
No, they're okay with it.
But they, uh, some can't get out of the house.
Yeah, I get that, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that. I'm all about accessibility and meeting people's needs.
Yeah, John just, he, he came up to us and thought that, you know, we could do something like that. We, we just agreed that.
I didn't think of that point, but.
Just going to cut it, and we get a hundred people, now is it going to be down to fifty? Because fifty of them decide, I'm just going to stay home and watch it. So that's, that's my only thought. Always play that double advocate side, but.
Well, yeah, John's going to talk to, uh, Dan, try to figure out what they could do or whatever, so.
I mean, Dan wants to be with us, he'll certainly make a livestream with us.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys think that's.
With, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, cool. Okay, uh, John, you all done?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any road committee meetings I know of coming up, and municipal grounds, I do not have anything.
Yes, so he was actually in, um, the name, uh, the gentleman that's doing the municipal grounds and asked, inquired to see if we had the property survey piece done.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I told him that, uh, you would reach out, he's in the middle of April.
Yeah.
And I left you the bridge report, so I was sure you saw him and all the other conversations.
Yeah, yeah. I'll echo a little before I.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure you saw him.
We got those today. Okay, department head committee chair updates?
Boy. Will Langley, road commissioner, I'm going to re-roll the road posts tomorrow morning, so that's the plan right now, so I'll text you, Jim, when they're down.
Okay.
On top of that, they get, I'm getting those unposted, and probably either the second or third week, we're going to get down to County Road and get started on that project. Right now, the week of the twenty-first is spring break for the school, and that week I'm probably going to shut the road down so I can do all the color of it.
So they have to work on the buses and stuff?
Yeah, the buses and everything, and it just, it's just going to be a lot faster if you shut the road down, so I'm going to work that out a little bit, and then I'll get something out so people know about it, but right now that's what's going on. I got my tree guy coming at the beginning of this, uh, beginning of next week. They're going to do some work on Goose Pond Road, Mason Road, going to go to New Bridge Road, I had two trees break off, uh, about two or three weeks ago in that windstorm they're going to take care of. I got a dead pine tree on Buzzell Road they're going to take care of, a couple on Young Bridge, so, um, just going to check a bunch of stuff off and then see if the weather does. In a couple of weeks, we'll get sweeping and get cleaning up, so.
Give you a cold patch over there?
Yeah, that's next week, that's next week.
So when you, in regards to the road closure, if you can just, once you type up your blurb, would love to include it in like the town's newsletter and put it on the website, so if you can include me?
Oh, yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Will and I are going to have our daily talk, whether or not I can get over or not.
Um, so Jason's in the code office, I would have told John, but I had a busy afternoon and I didn't really get the chance to talk to him. For a building, we are actually, April seventh, we are moving to the twenty-twenty-one building codes, um, so I guess all contractors and homeowners, that type of thing, it's going to be some major changes in energy efficiency and stuff like that. Planning board, we also have, um, a, an amendment to a, uh, site plan. I had an individual who, um, had approved, um, a storage facility at, uh, Heard Lumber. He let the timeline lapse, so it's a twelve-month, if, once you get your permit, you're allowed twelve months. You don't get your, start your project, then it expires. He's at fourteen months, so we had to put him back in front of the planning board. We're going to try to fast-track it and just get it amended because nothing in the ordinance has changed. So with discussion with the board last time, we're going to, you know, just pretty much give an amendment to the already approved, um, stuff. We have another greatest practical extent as well. And then as John stated, Federance Variety Site Walk tomorrow at five, um, and they will follow, they will, at the end of the meeting, um, with some overview of their application. On that, sir.
Cool, thanks, Jason. Anybody else? I didn't see anybody. Okay, old business, there is none, new business, coenforcement violations.
So, uh, Tom is passing down, um, two pieces of paper each, two different properties that we're going to discuss. Keep the top one for yourself.
Oh, okay.
That's just your thing, you get two each.
They're turned.
He's going to be reading, not listening.
Oh, yeah, I'm on it. Same one, isn't it?
Yeah, I turn them, there are five copies and two pages each.
Maybe we should start at this next step.
See how. They were together.
Okay.
They make it for. Got it, got it.
So I missed out on fifteen here.
There you go.
Okay, so there's two in front of you as they make their way down. You can start with, uh, talking about the first one, tax map one twenty-three, lot seventeen, located on West Shore Drive, you want to just catch them up and they'll slide on them.
Uh, so we had a shore entry removal permit, um, it had, uh, there was an extensive selective cutting on there, and so we had them do a, uh, survey of all the trees. They overcut my thirty-four trees.
Tough?
Yeah. So, um, that was, uh, that was a violation that I brought to the board, um, to take care of it, the penalties and, and vegetation, so, um, yeah, that was a good one.
So, and that one there, this is the one on West Shore Drive. We, we've all seen the plans.
Yeah, yeah, the, the door, yeah, doors opened, uh, Jason met with them and fined more of them.
Yeah, John, you got to.
Yeah, so I became aware of this, I don't know, month and a half, two months ago.
Yeah, it's been a little while, what happened was is I was, uh, I knew it was an overcut, I didn't know how much.
Right.
Um, so I was working with the, the, um, contractor per se and, uh, just really waiting for the snow to remove, but then when I met with the select board, um, they wanted it out of my hands, so they had me have a survey company go back in, recount the trees, and get an actual count. Um, so it was, and, and, which is, I was actually grateful for that, took the responsibility off of me.
Well, for the public to know that.
Yeah.
The contractor actually had, Jason had the contractor at the beginning mark and put all the trees on a thing and whatnot to cut what you can cut.
Yeah.
And then they still cut thirty-four trees that they weren't supposed to cut.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then he turned around and had them go back and the same company marked it.
So Jason came to us with all this information today, and, you know, he had some recommendations, but part of the problem with this is, is a peninsula that had ten trees taken down out in the water. And, um, so it was more than just removing trees from the hundred-foot shoreline. So we discussed how we should move forward on that and how much each tree was worth. So came up with a number, so the fine for this will be fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And they will be replanting.
Yeah.
So many trees for each size tree that they took down.
Um, and so people do know each tree in the shoreline zone is a separate violation, so, um, that's why it, it tallies that, I don't know.
Then this could have been a lot worse.
Don't cut the trees in the shoreline.
This, this fine could be a lot.
I mean, yeah, and the public should know that the zoning ordinance regulates what the fee is going to be, it says anywhere from a hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars, so it could have been twenty-five hundred dollars, time thirty-four trees. They used, uh, Jason had a good recommendation of a point scale, the board went a little higher than, than that on the, um, on the outside.
Well, the peninsula was really.
Clear cut.
That, well, that was bad. I mean, you literally had to, the only way you could clear cut it is you had to go on the ice to do it, and, and, you know, everybody knows you don't do that. And so that, we obviously looked at that, that was something that was more egregious than the rest of it, you know, and.
Those trees may never be able to be.
Well, that's another thing, too. And unfortunately, Jason's going to have to go down there once a year.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, uh, longevity plan that we have to work out with the, you know, you have inspection after one year, inspection after, it takes three years or five years, and so, um, you need eighty percent of the trees to, to take, um, over that duration.
And what happens if it doesn't, if they don't meet that?
Uh, well, that I have to look into, it's either going to be replanting or it's going to be a violation, but I really, more or less, try to keep on replanting. It's going to be hard because if that one's is already half submerged. Yeah. Um, so to dig a hole, it's going to be a hole filled with water. Some trees might like it, but I don't think most of them will.
I guess you probably, whoever, you know, whoever's going to do the plant, uh, whatever, designs the mitigation or whatever.
That's going to have to figure out what type of tree you can plant back in there that's going to grow.
Rules of growing.
Cedar or something, you know, I don't know, something like that, but that's not my luck.
But, okay, and, um.
So you want to do a motion on this one first?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I make a motion, um, I'll see the subject property.
We're going to say map a lot.
Yeah, we'll just do the map a lot, um, to find map a lot, one, two, three, lot zero one seven, fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. All in favor? Okay, we got another one, Jason?
Uh, you do.
It's a tax map, two oh eight, lot eleven, on Mann Road.
Uh, so this would be in one of the pits down on Mann Road, and the owner of the pit cut into the hundred-foot buffer. Sounds like he did it to move rights away, but then that never happened, so he's got people back there that are.
So he was doing it right away, right?
He was going to change it right away, he never did, so probably quitting to cut it anyways according to Jason. So now he's got, most of his lot has been cut to inside the hundred-foot buffer. Yeah, some of it he inherited, a lot of it he did himself. And this is a different fine scale because this is just a one-time fine, no matter how many trees or how much. Yep. So Jason has come to us again today and we discussed it a little bit, and to be consistent with what we've done with other people in town doing something similar, the maximum fine we can give is twenty-five hundred dollars.
Plus, they, they.
So the individual, uh, he said it was going to take two, about two weeks, um, because it was a pretty expensive cut. He's going to be coming back to my office with a root vegetation plan, and, uh, he, for the whole project, because he's revegetating more than what the perimeter buffer was, it's, he's projecting approximately six months, I think is what he had said, maybe sooner.
Yeah, there's no shoreline or nothing like that we got to deal with, that's why it's a one violation. If it's a shoreline, it would have been a really big deal.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to assess, uh, the fine in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars on map, two oh eight, lot zero one one.
Okay.
All up here. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Move on to transportation demo and MSW bid comparison.
One page. I lost the, I lost the, what?
Well, if they weren't all crisscross, you know.
I guess that was my fault.
I, I was.
Feel like that.
Uh, she must keep us all to.
All right, John, come on up. All right, so this has been a project. Everybody has one? You need more?
Need one more.
One more. John's got one, everybody in the audience has one, because this is important information that we wanna get out, we want transparency, we want public, we want everybody to look at it. So, there are two different sides, um, one is, um, at the, about halfway down, you see MSW comparison and demo comparison, so, let's start on the side of MSW comparison.
What number's ten here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, what you see up top is, as you know, we went out to bid twice, and this is where we wanna make sure that everybody's clear on what the town of Acton has done. We went out to bid looking for someone to take our municipal solid waste and our demo to Scarborough Portland area, there were two different places we could've disposed of, their exact location was really irrelevant, it was just a matter that we were going to that area. So we put a bid out and we said, listen, if you're interested in disposing of our trash or hauling it, put a bid in, here's the criteria, we listed it all out, you were to put a hauling fee in, a disposal and a rental of any container. So we did that, we got prices back for the Scarborough Portland area, we got one quote back from Triano Waste for the MSW, and we got one quote back from Punske's for the demo. Shortly thereafter, the town was approached by, um.
Can I interrupt one little bit?
Yes.
After we went out to bid, the other company.
Contacted us.
Contacted us, so during the bid process.
During the bid process, they reached out, okay, so during the bid process, a company Waste Management in Rochester reached out to us and said, hey, we understand you've gone out to bid, is there any reason that it's just Scarborough Portland, why would you not consider Rochester? And we thought, oh, it's Acton, it's Rochester, we'll just go out to bid again, we hadn't made any decisions, let's see what the numbers to Rochester look like, so we went through the same process, give us your hauling, your disposal and your rental for household trash and for demo, but this time instead of going to Scarborough Portland, we're going to Rochester, opened it back up, encouraged everybody, sent copies to everybody to bid on the first one, second one advertised in the newspaper, we went through the exact same process. So this spreadsheet is a breakdown of what's happened, so first we're gonna talk about MSW. If you look down bottom, you have, um, and I'm sorry that it's kinda cut off in the corner, but, two thousand and twenty-four tonnage for household trash, there was nine hundred and eight tons taken off, which was approximately a hundred and four trips, they come twice a week. Okay, so, we took Triano's number for hauling our household trash and Waste Management based on the same hundred and four trips, and these are the numbers that you're looking at. So for Triano, if we take a hundred and four trips times, go up to your first column, you'll see they bid five seventy-seven fifty for the first year, if we had a hundred and four trips again, you're at sixty thousand zero sixty. Waste Management doing those same hundred and four trips at four twenty-five a year, you're gonna be at forty-four thousand six, uh, two hundred. Now because it's not just that, we could go all the way down before you get to your grand total. So once it's hauled there, the next thing that has to happen is it has to be disposed of. So we have Triano's disposal, you look up top there, the disposal tipping fee, they're a hundred and seven dollars a ton, so we took those nine hundred and eight tons of trash we got, we multiplied it times there, somewhere in the middle of one oh seven, and we came up with a ninety-seven one fifty-six. Waste Management also bid their tonnage, um, nine oh eight was times ninety dollars was their disposal and tipping fee, so there's the eighty-one seven. And then both companies also charge for a rental, they charge per month rental, even though we usually rent two at a time, we just did it for a one-year solid, so you can see that, uh, Triano wanted, what were they, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the rental, if you look up top, Waste Management was at a hundred and fifty. So we took those three columns, we figured out what it's gonna take from taking the trash there to the very end, grand total for just your household waste, Triano was at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven sixteen, and Waste Management was at a hundred and twenty-seven seven twenty. So it's a difference of thirty-one thousand essentially, we are currently with Triano, thirty-one thousand dollars savings go to Waste Management.
Are these rates guaranteed in the obvious?
Yes. That'll give us contracts.
So, Waste Management guaranteed five years?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, so flip the page, you have the same chart up top, this time we're gonna be looking, uh, towards the bottom, where it says the transportation for demo, 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 so let's look at our demo comparison, so thank you to John, he was able to say that in two thousand and twenty-four, there were three hundred and ninety yards, is that right?
Yes.
Three hundred and ninety yards of demo taken from the transfer station?
Tons.
Tons, tons yards, tons, thank you, you did say yes. And that was ninety-six trips, so three hundred and ninety tons, took us ninety-six trips to get there. All right, so, Punske's hauling based on ninety-six trips, you go up top and look, this forty-yard container, he's at four hundred and ten dollars for that container, so nine, ninety-six times four-ten gives us the thirty-nine thousand three sixty. Waste Management has the same forty-yard container, same ninety-six trips, they're at for the first year, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, that gave us the forty thousand eight hundred. All right, once it gets there, somebody's gonna dispose of it, Punske's, we're looking at, um, tipping fee based on, at three hundred and ninety tons, we talked about, times one forty-five, that's what when, Punske drives it to Triano to get disposed of, so it's the, um, it's the three ninety times a hundred and forty-five, you see above. So that's where the fifty-six five fifty comes from. Waste Management takes that same three hundred and ninety tons of demo, and you look over at their chart, they're at ninety dollars to dispose, so three ninety times ninety is that big. Both companies, Punske and Waste Management are also going to charge you a rental fee for their container, you can see Punske's is at ninety dollars, they're actually three dollars a day for their bid, but ninety, and then Waste Management is a flat hundred and fifty dollars. So, for your grand totals, if you're an Excel guru, you can add these cells up, Punske's is gonna be the thirty-nine three sixty, the fifty-six five fifty, and the ten eighty, will bring you to ninety-six thousand nine ninety. Waste Management, take their three numbers, brings you at seventy-seven thousand seven hundred. There's a difference of nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety dollars between the two companies.
Thanks, John.
Thank, we had a lot of help, Ed, John, Lauren, Cheryl, it was all a team effort going through these bids, but, um, that, uh, those are the true accurate numbers, so, I just wanna say, I know there's been a lot of discussion on social media, we always, you know, encourage the public to come to these meetings, I was hoping we'd have a bigger crowd, so that they could see these numbers and happy to post them online as well. Um, but these are sealed bids that come in, and that is the whole story as it happened, um, nothing else, you know, there's nothing in the middle, um, the numbers, you know, they are what they are, I mean, the town has no interest in this, other than the financials.
Right, trying to do the best we can do for the town.
Beyond price, are there any other considerations or differences between these two firms to consider?
Well, we haven't used them, so.
Yeah, we've never used Waste Management, I mean, they're a worldwide company.
Orange.
Which, they're massive, whether that's a plus or a minus, you know.
Here now, it sure looks like it's a plus because it's a lot cheaper.
Well, it's a plus in the dollar side, yeah.
Just putting the dollars aside, dollars are pretty compelling.
Yeah.
But just putting that aside, are there any other considerations?
I know, I know sometimes we discuss giving considerations to those that we partner with that have, you know, been loyal to us and have cared to us in the past, even if the price is all different, I know, we've heard some of those concerns from the public, so, we won't put that out there.
Yeah, we've never, we've never been one that goes with low bid.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we always.
It's gotta be a compelling reason for not going.
Yeah, I agree, but.
Right, I, I don't think there's a.
Well, I mean, the issue we're having here, there's a couple issues here, because when we put the first bid out to go to Scarborough, we, we got, we got a bid from them, from the individual that's on social media, and then we turned around, and of course, I had talked to the individual, called him personally, said that he didn't even wanna haul this one place, he said he wasn't even gonna put a bid in, because he didn't wanna haul the equal main, and then when we put out to go to New Hampshire, um, didn't put a bid at all, so.
I, I did speak to, uh, Mr. Punske.
Yeah.
During the whole process, and explained to him what, what the deal was, uh, it's basically falls under the tipping fees, you know, the tipping fees is so much different. I, I basically pleaded with him to put a bid in.
What?
I, I basically pleaded with him to put a bid in to go to New Hampshire, to go to Waste Management, and he just said he couldn't.
Now, so, if, say if we did go that route, we had someone like him, not, doesn't say it had to be him, we had another contractor hauling to Waste Management, would that affect our MSW?
It would affect the tipping fee by five dollars per ton, so go from ninety to ninety-five.
Yep.
Yep.
So the numbers are what they are if we take both.
Yes.
Um, and I just wanna remind the board too, that this, whatever decision you make, um, really, you know, both companies should get some notice, even though we're not in act, in contracts, we had said, um, you know, somewhere, July first is when we were looking to.
July first is when our contract is up with the Tri-County Group, and that kinda is what's driven all this. So, Waste Management had put a price into the Tri-County Group, uh, didn't look all that attractive from where we were initially, but, after some conversation with them and then their bids coming in, you know, it's, it's, it's very attractive.
Yeah, that's a good point, I wanna make sure we said clear, this whole bid process started, because we haven't been out to bid, we have been, we haven't gone out to bid with the Punske's for many years, Triano, we've been without a contract for many years, this happened because, Casella, because of, because of the.
A contract.
Right, it was a ten-year contract that expires June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five, so that initiated.
Yeah, and this all started last.
The year, huh?
November, I mean, last, uh, August, you know, with, with some meetings with the Tri-County, uh, towns.
So nothing says that you have to, you have to decide on the site, you have, I have all the bids and the bid binders, if you wanna look at them, um, but, I mean, that's, that's the numbers.
It seems to me between the money and that you're also getting a five-year bid as opposed to a three-year, I can imagine much is gonna be going down in cost.
No, I mean, in, the right-hand column up top shows you the rates for the five years.
Yes.
They do, they do escalate, but they don't escalate a lot.
I, I, I looked at them, they would, they seem to be in line with what.
Yeah.
Uh, Triano, or, excuse me, uh, was it Punske was offering?
What was, what was Punske offered for, uh, for one year, two year?
Well, he, his bid was for one year, uh, but we did talk to him, and he generally goes up to a twenty dollars a year and said he would.
So those weren't fixed?
No, but he has continuously, it's been a twenty-dollar rate, we did go back several years and pull, he didn't put anything in writing, but he's been honest about twenty dollars. The, the thing with Punske's is that, different than Waste Management, is that when you look at, you know, Punske's driving it there, but, he's at the mercy of Triano for the tipping fee, you know, they're deciding, cause he doesn't have his own transportation like Waste Management, so he's driving it, so, Punske is at Triano's mercy about the.
Yeah.
The per-ton fee.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
So, it looks like there's a twenty percent difference between the two of them.
So, to correct you on that, he could also haul that material someplace else.
Well, it'd have to go to the Scarborough Portland area, I mean, that's what the bid said.
Well, he's bidding it out for a ton to get rid of it, right?
Right, no, he doesn't, no.
Oh, he's just doing it for the, just for the haul?
Hauling, yes, hauling and the rental, baby.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I have, I have a question, I don't know if this is something you can answer, um, you, you named that, he, he said that he couldn't, Punske couldn't go to Waste Management, was it any particular reason why?
I think it's, I think it's a dollar and cents thing for him.
Okay.
But I'm not positive, I mean, he, he did say insurance would be an issue.
May have something to do with state lines.
Be able to, yeah, I mean, so, yeah, so, to get into the trucking side of it, to be, to take, to take things from New, Maine to New Hampshire, you have to have a portion plate on the truck, in order to go to New Hampshire, a portion of your fuel surcharge or your fuel taxes quarterly.
It's just his choice, right?
Yeah, it's, it's his choice to do it.
Okay, that's why.
He did say he didn't even know if he could get the insurance to be able to, in his words, go up on the hill in Rochester, go up on, you know, go up to actually where they dump it, I don't know what, I have no idea what the insurance is at to drive up to the landfill and dump, I have nothing to know about that, so.
Is it steep? I don't, does that mean, is it steep though?
No, trucks are up there every day, hundreds of them, so, I don't know, but, I mean, I really wish, I really, I really talked to him about trying to add a haul, because we don't, we don't wanna lose him, but for fifty thousand dollars, it's, I don't know.
Well, that's fifty thousand a year.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, on a five-year contract, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, um.
I mean, he, he will still be maintaining, well, goes well, I haven't talked to him about it, but, there's no reason to take the steel away from him, and there is some other trucking he does, to recycle containers, so, there's no.
Have we asked him if he's still interested in doing that?
I have not asked him, no, I was gonna leave that up to the superintendent to handle, so.
So, so, what, your recommendation?
I think both my name and the superintendents would need to go with.
I'm sorry, I should've asked you your recommendation, sorry about that.
Right, I am John Lohm.
He was talking, so I just asked him.
That's okay, no, that's fine, uh, it, it's difficult, when you ask for a recommendation, uh, I know Jim, I've known him since just last summer, I don't have a relationship with Waste Management, it was my business and I was looking at it, I know what I'm gonna get with Jim, and I can call him on a weekend, uh, we have an issue, we need more containers, whatever, he's there in an hour, Waste Management, I don't know that we would have that type of customer service relationship with them, um, so you're asking for my.
So, so, how's this, what's your recommendation if you were looking at the numbers?
If I was looking at the numbers and it was my business, then I would, I would go with Waste Management, yeah, and the only, the only concern that I would have, or one of the concerns that I would have, I guess, is being locked into a five-year contract with them.
Why wouldn't you wanna be locked into a five-year?
Why, would it, there, I mean.
It's not gonna go down.
No, it's not gonna go down, but would it, if you found somebody else that might be less expensive?
Well, what are we locking into, is it, um, so much material to be moved and so many trips, or is it just, when we move material and trips, this is the rate we.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So if we changed our practices at the transfer station somehow, and reduced the amount of material that was coming in, we could still keep our costs down?
You'd have to look at the contract to see how it read.
But the contract doesn't tie us down, the contract doesn't tie us down to minimum tonnage, right?
If it's per trip and per tonnage, then I think we're all set.
The only way you're gonna say money is to haul it in.
Yeah, as far as the customer service, you may, um, you may wanna have some discussions with them about that, and find ways to putting something in the contract about your expectations with customer service, after hours or other, other events you might think of, you can probably get that embedded in the contract.
Yeah, and in all fairness too, I mean, this, you know, and I don't know if, maybe Ed or John has already done this, but, I mean, Waste Management does have a lengthy, you know, they provided us a lengthy binder that, that we looked at, I mean, it is important for somebody to read that fine print, you know, prior to, I mean, we pulled the numbers out, put this together, we've been looking at numbers for weeks and weeks, but, in all, you know, honestly, if there's minimums in there or anything, especially with the point you make, it hasn't been completely looked over, I just wanna make that transparent.
Why don't we take another week or so then?
I'd need two weeks.
And send it off to our attorney and.
Just to make sure there's no, I just wanna make sure there's no minimums in there.
Right.
No, but I, I figure we at least ask for the recommendation of our superintendent, I do expect to make that.
I wanna, I do wanna ask, I know that you were asked to give the numbers, but I, I wanna give your overall recommendation, is it the same, because I do think other things should be taken into consideration, so, like, you started to talk about beyond just the pricing, we've named that we don't always just look at price, so I wanna, what would your overall, not just look at it, but the whole overall picture, would it still be Waste Management or?
I, okay, this, uh, I think I would do more, I would do more research on Waste Management, not necessarily with the direct, directly with the company, but with other, um, transfer stations.
References.
Other, other people, other transfer stations that.
Find out if they're available on weekends.
Yeah, and say, you know, I, is your level of service good, is it bad, did you turn your calls timely fashion, you get a situation like we've been in before, um, last summer, it may have only happened once or twice, but, the container gets full, and we've got two lines of vehicles coming into the transfer station, where do we put the trash, and it's like, call Jim up, Jim brought us a dumpster, or container, so, I, I don't have all the history that some of you have with him, um, I would just, I would throw caution to the wind of getting into a viable contract without just doing.
References, that's a good point.
I think there are some in that, in that folder, you said this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I just wanna point out, so, we, we asked for references, we researched the contract, and we revisited it a couple weeks.
I, I like that, um, I would, I know that you've probably advertised this before, but, I, I will just point out, I'm a little disappointed by the lack of people here, just because of the word amount of stuff that's been going around, I know last meeting I named that it's really important for people to show up here, when the board's here, when we're making these decisions, so that we can make informed choices, and it's hard for us when we don't have people showing up to share their concerns, so, I know you do a great job, but just making sure that we again reiterate when that meeting comes up, and emphasize to people that if they really have concerns, posting on social media is not gonna get it done, they need to come here and have those discussions with us.
I know of a couple of us that are not on social media, I haven't read any of that stuff, you know, I think.
I've seen some of it.
I don't know, but I.
Some of it's silly, some of it's silly, some of it's got some ymir, I mean, Jim's done a really good job for the town of Acton.
And we all, we all agree on that, he's been very good with it.
And I'm just saying, because Ed and Jennifer, everyone has done such a good job doing the research, getting these numbers, and I wanna make sure when people are talking and having discussions, that informed, they know the process that has been done and the, the reasoning why, and it's hard if people don't show up to these meetings, that's, that's the thing, it's for the people who haven't showed up, who are voicing their concerns and things, I wanna make sure, but when they are talking, exchanging information, it's active information, and reflects the hard work that this board and our town employees And reflects the hard work that this board and our town employees put into making these decisions. I wanna make sure that everyone who's worked on this gets fairly represented. And part of that is people showing up during these discussions.
There was another thing I thought I'd like to mention, um, as long as, and, and I was in, I was part of this this morning. But I know there was some phone calls that were made during the day. Originally, I believe that, um, Waste Management was gonna give us a thirty-yard container. Whereas we use a forty-yard container with Jim Penske. So as long as Waste Management keeps their word. And, you know, when they come one day and they say, well, we don't have a forty-yard container, you know, you're gonna have to use this thirty, then we start running into.
The contract says forty-yard con- forty-yard, forty-yard container.
So, yeah, as long as the contract's.
Yeah.
You might ask them what the turnover rate of customers.
That's a good question.
That will give you an indication of what, if they're keeping their customers, they're, they're probably happy. But if they got a high turnover rate, that's something worth looking into.
You say that, you mean with, uh, other transfer stations?
No, in other, you look at their customer base, how frequently are they, are customers leaving them and going to other vendors?
They're probably not.
Hmm?
They're probably not.
No, I wouldn't think so.
Waste Management is so big that it's not just.
Well, they're big because they still have customers, I'm sure.
It's worldwide.
This is to get at your concern about, uh, how is this firm gonna compare to someone you've known for a long time? Well, it's got a great reputation, and if they hang onto their customers, for me, that would give me some confidence that they're gonna be good.
I, I'm a little concerned here though, cause, so here we are, we're talking about one aspect of this whole thing, and we're talking about the demo, right? But the MSW's really, you know, something we're, we're concerned using Waste Management on.
Right.
So if we could use Waste Management for doing our MSW, but we're worried about whether or not they're gonna treat us good on the other side of it. What, what would say, fifty thousand dollars a year?
Oh.
Yeah.
Five years of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on my math rate?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I could just see us now at the Warren Finanz trying to explain why we didn't take the low bid. And then try to figure out why two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in five years wasn't a good idea, um.
Like, I'm, I'm sold on, on twenty percent. I was just trying to give you some thoughts about how to, how to, you know, get more comfortable with this vendor.
I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the idea of Waste Management, I just wanna make sure that people know that we, we turn it over stone, whatever the decision is.
And we'll put the spreadsheet online and inform the decision, get some references, check in two weeks.
They're, they're, they're a due company, like, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
If there was, if there was, if you're looking at these numbers, and we do it with our salt, we do it with our salt every year. You know, we go through the cog, the cog is this number, and then Granite State would be the same exact number. But we pay to get into the cog, but we still use Granite State. Well, Granite State's roughly the same number, but we use them, cause we keep using them, they've been good to us. Um, and, and, and we've done it with paving too. Yeah, you, I remember when Alderweireld mentioned, there was certain pavers, I wouldn't let paving down the back. Okay, I didn't care if they were low bid or not, we went with quality, that's what we got. But it's a lot, a lot of money, you know, and. We go study all this research and see what's going on.
Especially if they have quality, then there's, there's no argument there, if they're quality, yeah.
We'll do some data.
Quarter of a million dollars for five years is a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money. And especially seeing, what concerns me on the demo is the one-year. I'm all in on five. Because there's one thing I can guarantee you is trash disposal's not gonna get less than five, okay? So it's gonna go up and up and up, so you, you, you want that five-year, that's a security blanket. What I'm worried about is on the demo side, when you get a one-year contract, you don't own the place you're dumping stuff. Okay, and, and say Triano decides, hey, I'm sorry, Joe Schmo, we gotta charge you this now. And that going up fifty dollars at a time, well, now we're back to square A, square one, we're back to whoever we had before, because we were trying to do the bunny system. So it doesn't work. Um, yeah, we, we oughta look in and see the references, look around some towns, I'm sure it'll be fun.
I think if we can get, I guarantee that we could call on Saturday.
We'll work on a couple of things.
And I'm sure of it, those trucks are running twenty points.
They have, they have, they have the side.
It's not gonna come. Yeah, one of the, one of the reasons why the tri-county group didn't go towards Waste Management is that group, it's a huge group. There's a lot of volume. New Hampshire state law says Waste Management, being in New Hampshire, can only take X amount of tons from out-of-state vendors. So they could only handle half of the tri-county group. Now, a lot of the tri-county group is splintering off into different places. That's why Waste Management contacted us. My first question was foreign. You said you could only take half of that group. You said, that's correct. But you're independent, you, you know, with the group splintering, we can handle one hundred percent of your product.
So they were, they were kinda stifled, they weren't allowed to jump in the thing because of the law.
Right, well, the, the group decided, we don't wanna go that way, then we, you know, looked at different companies, which we've looked at already too, so.
So we got kinda disbanded and that opened the door.
Yeah, that opened the door to Waste Management to be able to come out and go to different.
Cause I was surprised when I got the email, like, why'd they email it?
Yeah. Yeah, they weren't, they weren't, we basically, as the group that I sat on, I sat on that board, um, just kind of said, no, it's, you know, thanks for the bid, but. You know, and that bid number they'd given us was the same bid number that they gave the group.
Oh, nice.
So next week, we should be able to wrap this up?
Week following, when I'm.
Oh, week following, okay, thank you.
John and I will work on some things and we'll get back to you on the set scene.
Thanks a lot, John. Um, your comment?
Yeah, Joyce, Joyce, for Warren and Finance, they're real this year tonight.
I wasn't, I was, I was just using you as an example, sorry.
Anyway, what Warren and Finance would say, David, is you know one guy and you know him well. He should do, I, I am sorry, I don't remember.
John.
John, from the superintendent, should speak to people, recommendations himself, not just you guys, but him. To get a feeling that he wants, because that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is a very big deal. But if he speaks to them, he's running that whole facility, it's a hundred percent up to him.
Excuse me?
He's making the phone calls when he doesn't get a trailer. He's the one who's gonna do that work. So with what you give him and what he finds out on his own is really what makes it work well.
What do you mean it's a hundred percent up to him?
Well, Tom or any of you aren't gonna be calling, looking for a bigger tractor trailer.
Yeah.
On a Saturday afternoon.
Yeah.
Or, or Sunday morning.
Sure.
He's gonna be doing it, that's his responsibility as a superintendent. So I would, I would think, and I, and I can say that.
So John and I will work together on it, because at the end of the day, it's still the board's contract, so if John doesn't get his, his data, it's gonna come back for more, yeah.
I don't think she meant to that, I think she meant saying that he's the one who's gonna.
Yeah.
It's good for him that she, like, kinda.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly.
I don't think she meant that the way that.
That, that has nothing against, but you have to take care of the contracts, that's your job.
Yep, well, it'll be a joint effort, we'll get it done, but, but I think it's important.
We're, we're, we're trying to do the right thing.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, you sure, you good? You were up there a long time, Rob.
No, I'm on side.
Okay, alright.
You've been twice, you've been twice.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, John, you good? Yes, I'm good.
Thank you so much.
So we're gonna, uh, table this for a couple of weeks.
Correct.
And we're gonna do some research in between.
We are.
Awesome.
It's time.
Okay, we are down to liquor license request.
The.
We haven't done yet.
Uh, uh, Acton Fair, this is Cheers To You, it's the same company that they have used for the last several years. Uh, nothing has changed, they've paid the fees, they have their liability insurance, all is well, it is.
This is from the.
Twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, Acton Fair.
Well, it's early this year.
The, um, yes, it's my response to it, I'd like to have done it earlier. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, here's the cover.
Better than week before, right?
Yes.
Like a ma- uh, make a motion to approve an application for a liquor license to Cheers To You Inc. Uh, at the Acton Fair, the dates of August twenty-first to the twenty-fourth. Anything else?
It, perfect.
I, I don't know if I have to stay or not. My sister works for a new company, I don't know.
No.
They have a contract with a, okay, I just wanna make sure, okay.
All in favor?
I just wanna make sure.
It wasn't sort of a media, you know.
They just started a contract, I don't know what company, but they work the fair, I wanted to make sure there was a.
The town's, um, part in the liquor license is more informational, so it goes, it goes to the state for an actual decision.
Okay.
It's just a notifying.
I just wanna cover, cover.
Yeah, no, and I'm just trying to answer you.
Myself.
One second, we have another one?
None, I'm done with that.
See you there, guys.
Are you done?
Sorry.
You shortened it up a little bit, didn't we?
Yeah, I've got an explanation once we get done with it.
Very good, it wasn't like company.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't hear me say Cheers To You?
No, I, I did, but she had told me recently that she'd just gotten a contract, so I didn't know which one it was. I know when the renter comes out.
That's it, okay.
But I wanted to make sure it wasn't.
The, uh. Rentals, they must, did they?
They submitted everything, but we're working on, on getting your park, your parking plan and the other things, they'll be back on the agenda soon.
Perfect, I'm something they're getting all done before.
They are, number three weekends this year.
Oof, fantastic.
Everybody I wanna know is like, yay. You're, you're excited. Oh, no, it looks like a good time.
It is, very good time.
Just please don't suck it down.
You did so well that year.
For like TV.
You like it.
I think, I think John would do it.
He did an interview one year, you didn't see that?
Yeah, go, go look it up on YouTube, look it up.
That's, that's the thing, you start advertising, that's how they're gonna advertise it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Our own TV star.
Yeah, okay, we're gonna move on. Um, do you have warrant articles?
Okay, so even though you're not meeting next week, I'm gonna need to, I'm gonna have a warrant put together, and we're gonna release this to the finance committee. So, uh, we worked with Brad Moore for a couple of hours last week on going through your articles. And you guys decided that, uh, we were not gonna do the snow plowing amount until, we were gonna do that at a special town meeting in July or August. We're gonna see what happens, um, in April, we're gonna go up to bid, and then we're gonna have an open special town meeting to come up with a difference in money. That was the agreement, so that's off. In talking to Brad about the different items, the conversation of the road commissioner and the position came up. Road commissioner has to be an elected position, um, and it also, there was a statute that, that Attorney Moore found. It says that it has to be voted on ninety days before it can take effect. Which means that, we know that District One Road Position is open right now, Mr. Langley's taking out papers. And he has to be re-elected or, you know, he's taking out papers for that position. If the town voted in June to combine these, it could not take effect until July first of twenty-twenty-six. And it will still be an election that will start a three-year cycle. Um, Brad's recommendation is, is that because of the confusion of putting. You know, on a June ballot, Patrick, to elect one road commissioner for District One, the names, and then, then a follow-up referendum to say, to change it from two to one. If you're gonna have a special town meeting in a couple of months to do the appropriation of snow plowing, should the contract pass. He's recommending you put that change on that special town meeting. That's why it's not on the draft that we're gonna go over in the next few minutes. So I guess discussion on that first?
Well, I guess I have a question. So you said that it'd have to take this ninety days before, so if it's done at its town meeting, would that take effect then? Or would we still run it?
No, it's, no, it's gonna take, it has to, the vote has to happen ninety days before, so the idea is that would be Ju- July for, it would be the June of twenty-twenty-six. Because you have to do nomination papers and go through those.
So I guess it's gonna be so late, there's no need to rush it, it's like, okay, that makes sense.
And if the plowing fails, then we could end up, end up with just Will on a special town meeting.
Oh, but fails, he's road commissioner anyways.
Right, he's already.
No, no, but I mean.
Oh, right, as far as combining them, right, he was decided at that point.
So Will, uh, will be on the ballot in June.
He was gonna be on ballot regardless.
No, no, but I just wanna understand that, he'll be on the ballot in June for District One.
Correct.
And then in July, there'll be, um, special town meeting with the mo- with some kind of vote to combine to one district.
Right.
And would, is Will then assuming that role at that time, or does he need to be re-elected?
Brad is, Brad is looking into that, and he's actually reached out to Maine Municipal. But his original response, and you cannot hold me to this, is that if it takes effect June of twenty-twenty-six, you've now combined it to one position. The election will start over into a three-year term.
I don't understand the election, it should be an election.
He would have to.
So are you thinking that, but it can't be appointed? So when, you know, so if you combine them.
Is his term up next year on the other side?
No, he's got two years left.
So you got two years there, and he has three on that side, so why there'd be an election in June?
Because you're, because you're having a town meeting to change it, to change all of that from two to one, and you could make it effective June first to twenty-seven if you'd like. You can have the effective date whenever, but when you make that effective date, it's gonna trump the election.
See, I could see why there'd be an issue if you combined it financially. Because when you, when we vote on it, we vote District One and District Two, right? So I can understand that, um.
By statute, the selectmen, school committee, and road commissioner have to be elected positions.
So, so are you suggesting that in July, um, we take a vote on combining the two into one? And to take effect July first, two thousand twenty-six?
Your effective date is, can be decided, I mean, that, yes, yes.
So then, Will, uh, if he continues.
Right.
Would be pulling papers and running next June for the new one slot.
For the new.
And you can make it effective at, at the end of any term, David. If you'd rather do it, or, you know, and again, you gotta remember that this just happened Friday. So Maine Municipal, there may be a way to, to have it taken over, but essentially it is a new position.
Yeah.
That at some point, he's gonna have to start running for. So just figure out when that term expiration, you can set that date.
Which, we're making.
Preliminary opinion from them. But in any event, what he's saying, that he doesn't think should happen, am I missing?
No, no, no.
Everyone's looking out the window, is that it, since it has to be ninety days before the election, then there's no reason to put it on the June ballot.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does that make sense? And continue to sort it out. Alright, so that brings us to what's in front of you, so, you good, David?
Oh, I'm just trying to comprehend.
And we have some time to sort, sort it out.
This is preliminary, this is.
We have time to.
Because honestly, it puts the road commissioner in really a tough spot. Because he's got two years, right, on that side, three years on that side, then we combine it, right? So he's actually only got one year, right?
So when would you have it take effect?
He's gotta re, gotta re-elect to get to one side, right? If I was him, I'd say, I don't wanna see a special town meeting for three years, right?
And we, we do that.
At least two years.
Yeah.
You can make the effective date at the end of his District Two.
We just have to plan it.
David, you can make it effective at the end of his District Two term.
Yeah, so we, what we're, you may not even put on this year.
But we have to plan it, and also there's no guarantee that would pass, right?
Well, you know, that's, it gets Brad to a good job, right?
Alright, so let's get through the, like, these items, and we'll keep getting on.
I'm in rush on putting that one up.
Can also, can also make it up to Will.
So the ninety-day statute, Will, is what's new.
Whatever he wants to make known, if you're on me.
Alright, and let's get through the election before we let him make a decision, so we'll see that.
Yeah, we'll see the path to do the town for.
That and right, and the reelection. Okay, so that brings us down to three for June. Remember, we've gotta get this over, so. First one is to see if the to- the town will vote to expend up to bl- X dollars from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of a new ambulance. Per your request, I reached out to the fire chief, and the actual two bids that he has, one is for five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven ninety-four. And the other one is for five seventy-two, six fifty-four.
What are they good for?
Uh, so it's not an actual bid, they're just estimates based on conversations. They're just estimates based on conversations with the chief. He hasn't put a whole bid package together, there's nothing, you know. To say that this is gonna be the package that the board or the fire chiefs moves forward. He had said he had verbal conversations with what he thought he wanted. And those were rough numbers that came back, but they can't be held to anything. That's why he originally asked for the six fifty.
And what was the, I know last meeting we talked about what appropriate.
Closer to six is what it sounded like the board was leaning towards.
And that would give the, like, what? Depending on the numbers, about thirty, thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Like around.
So are we looking for a number?
If you want this to make it a time.
What's the schedule and process for this look like? This is for a June?
This is for a June, June tenth ballot, which means.
So when do these need to be finalized?
You need to make a decision on this number. So once you make a, uh, the idea is that you make a decision on these warrant articles tonight. The warrant gets typed and sent to the finance committee, hopefully to meet within next week to start talking about it.
When, when does, it has to come back to us? When do we have to have our final approval?
So absentee ballots have to be available, you figure by May tenth, um, you're gonna need to vote on it. I mean, I'm thinking no later than the twenty-third, you've got to have a public hearing, and we just have a couple of weeks of April.
On the twenty-third of that speech.
Okay, thank you. I feel comfortable with six hundred, I don't feel comfortable going below that. And again, I think we talked about how, wait, how did it do?
See the town will vote to expend, um.
Did, didn't we talk about to up to?
Not to exceed, yes, I'll change that.
Not there's something in there, so that, I'm not saying that this is.
See the town will vote to appropriate, uh, up to six hundred thousand dollars for the unassigned fund balance.
So that it is something that, like, in case there is that local needed, but not saying that that's the number that.
You know what we're doing right now, right?
Same thing, same thing we didn't wanna do with the plow.
We're just throwing crap on the wall, and we're throwing numbers here, we have no idea. I mean, you're talking forty thousand dollars difference, we're just gonna put, because of, for a slush? Don't we, should we have an idea of exactly what this thing's gonna cost and with some, you know?
With the estimates that we just got.
But he, no, those are just, this isn't a bid, that's just a. But he, no, those are just, this isn't a bid, that's just a estimate, right? So, but, but you're talking, what are the, what are the, what are the bids?
Well, so the, the first one is four hundred and thirty-three thousand, but it's got all of these add-ons for different things, so that brings it to five sixty-nine, seven ninety-four. The second one was four hundred and thirty-five thousands, but with the add-ons that he was looking for, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, six seventy-four.
Okay, so, you know, you're talking, uh, what, twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yep.
And the other one's close to thirty-one.
Twenty-eight, thirty-one, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean. Well, we do our budget season every year, you know, we, we're trying to keep our budgets down low, and it's like, that's thirty, forty thousand bucks. But, I mean, we gotta, we gotta, I wanna put something through you, I just wanna make sure that we're not just throwing a big number on the wall and saying, hopefully aim for it.
If this is a fairly recent number, and we get this done in June, when we go out to bid immediately?
Yeah, no, it would go up.
Fairly close, fairly close to these?
I'll also say, I've seen in a matter of a month, prices changed drastically on different things, but I, I just wanna finish my thought fees. Um, I've seen numbers change drastically, and I don't wanna run into the problem where we only allocate so much, and then the numbers have gone up, and we don't have that little room to, then it's gonna extend that process, that's my concern.
Well, guess what you do then, put it out the bid, get the actual contract, then we know what we're gonna bid on, instead of just guessing, 'cause that's what we're doing at this point. We did the same thing with the town check, we put the money ahead first, then we put it out to bid, then we didn't have enough money, so, um.
Do we have time?
We probably don't.
What is the time constraint? If we, it has to be on a ballot.
Well, it doesn't have to be on a ballot, this board decided that it was gonna go on a ballot because they heard from people that just like the sheriff's contract, that they wanted to be able to vote on that.
So when would the next ballot be?
The board of selectmen can, can call a referendum vote anytime they like, as long as they meet their timeline.
Well, that's, that's kinda what I'm getting to here, instead of pushing this through, the, the other, the other thing you gotta worry about is, what if it's not enough?
Right, here's, here's another thought, we're gonna have another election, another, uh, special town meeting in July.
Yeah, but, but you, the board has already given the public, I mean, essentially your overall, uh, support that you would put it on a ballot versus an open town meeting.
I think a ballot makes sense.
So you could, I mean, you know, you definitely could put them both on ballots, you know, I mean, enough that says.
What happens if we, if we have a, a ballot in November? Are there gonna be elections in November?
Sure, yes, sure, there'll be some out of the.
So probably is, but. Couldn't be on a ballot at that time?
I mean, yeah.
I think, I think your pricing might be.
Well, you could go out to bid immediately, you could prep a bid packet over the next couple of weeks, and it could be contingent on.
And vote and prep.
An approval at, by secret ballot on November such and such, or whatever date you pick, I mean, you could do one sooner.
Well, so what I'm worried about is, yeah, and I think Wayne brought it up himself, he's worried about the tariffs and all this other stuff, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of, yeah.
So he's got this number, and, and you know, I'm worried about having thirty, forty thousand just hanging around, but at the end of the day. You never know, it could go over that number, we would pretty silly if we only put six hundred ahead. We, put six hundred, and then it comes out to be six twenty-five or something like that, I mean.
Well, I think that's why the fire chiefs are original, we were the ones who brought it down to six hundred, I believe the original proposal was six fifty.
Yeah, but that, you know, you're talking, uh, seventy thousand dollars too.
But you're also talking, the fire chief, who, who, this is his job, and he knows these numbers pretty well.
I mean, would the board support a motion to allow the fire chief to put together a big packet to bring back for the next meeting and start the big process with the contingency of it passing at an upcoming ballot? So that at least he knows you're still moving forward with it?
Can you repeat that again, the full?
So, if you, if you agree that, I mean, it, it doesn't make sense that we've gotta make sure we have enough money, and the flip side of what David is saying is that. When we often put a number out there, you're basically inviting contractors a bit or to bid five ninety-nine, nine ninety-nine, they know which money you have.
But do, do the contractors, the minutes know that, though, it's, it's, it's.
Well, they will, the minute that we, the, as soon as you make this ballot public, there, there, anybody's gonna be able to figure out how much money you have to spend. What I'm saying is that if you wanna go out to bid first, which could make sense, at least making a motion to authorize, not administrator, the fire chief, to put together a bid packet for the purchase of a new ambulance. For an upcoming vote, so as soon as we have, you know, we can go out to bid now and just put a line in it that is contingent on approval.
That, that way there too, you can have the stipulations, how long this price is good for, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, I want everything covered, 'cause we're doing everything backwards here.
Yeah, and I just think that, you know, if you, if you make the motion and, you know, indicate that it's.
I don't care what he puts in that thing, all the bells and whistles, I just wanna know the price of that one-shot deal.
So my question, I, now, I'm on board, but that my concern is, is, Tom, I'm, we're doing that, do you think we could still get this on the?
It will not be on the June.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, part of your motion would have to be, you know, you know, to not to exceed.
That's, and it won't be July either.
No, I would say no la- I would, in your motion, you could say, you know, to be voted on by secret ballot, no later than the November twenty twenty-five election.
We probably won't get our bids back for a month anyways.
That's, right, so.
Takes a while.
You know.
So by the way, get the bids in for a month, we get the bids in.
You gotta review them, you gotta make this decision.
Get, get, by that time, they're gonna know their tariffs, all that's pretty much done now at this point, they'll be able to factor that into their pricing.
We gotta have some rock solid here.
And just put the, in the motion, when you find on voting on.
I like that, you're going out to bid.
Will put it on November ballot?
Yep. If we do it sooner, okay, but if not, November works.
We might be able to do something.
Well, that's why you say not, you know, to be voted on a secret ballot, no later than November twenty twenty-five ballot, so at least it, you know.
Yep.
I don't wanna be like the Grinch or anything here, but you know, I mean, we got a lot of money just floating around, and we, and we get help for that. Every year, we get help for that, and we're trying to stop that.
I agree, we, we do get a lot of pushback from it, but I also know that we've had a lot of public comment in favor of this, but I also, it's hard, 'cause I feel like this.
You gotta run this like a business, dude.
I know, I know, it's, but it's also, I feel like there's, there's truths in everything, and that's where it's conflicting, 'cause I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying. In regards to making sure we're, we're putting the numbers and not just blindly going at this, but also, I, I've heard, and as they say, the fire chief and worry about the timeline, so that.
Oh, I, I talked to the fire chief myself, and I'm all for it, I'm all for it, and maybe it's part of our, maybe it's, maybe we're to blame that we didn't say, hey, let's get this RFP run out. That's what we should've done, anytime we buy anything, the first thing we should be doing is throwing an RFP out there, let's get a price on this so we can get a solid number to put on a warrant. And we're not doing that, we're getting, we can come up with estimates, we can get estimates on new air pack or something, that might be ten grand, but you're talking six hundred thousand dollars, you don't get estimates, you get prices. You know, you get contract prices.
You don't go into a car dealership with a pocket full of money and say, here, I got ten thousand dollars, I wanna buy a, a car.
RFP or something, yeah.
Yeah, what, you know, what do you got, oh, I got this one for nine, nine ninety-five, you know, so, and that's exactly what we're doing, so, yeah, tell us what it is.
Well, I appreciate that, I would, I would be in favor of that.
And I want the chief to know that, you know, we'll, we'll try to expedite this as much as we can, but we, we have to do this right.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as this is clear, you know, that, that's we're doing that.
I think he'll be happy that we're moving forward, yeah, you know.
So the motion is.
What, uh, do we have, do we have a motion?
Yeah, did we have a motion?
We've only made a motion.
No, I was just giving you an example.
Saying that we could make a motion to give the town administrator and fire chief, what was the word, authority about?
Authority to put together the bid packet for new ambulance, to present, to be presented to select board, to be voted on by.
What you said. And no later than, yeah, November.
All in favor?
Okay, so back to the June ballot.
So that's mean we're taking one option?
That's right. Uh, to see if the town will vote to continue with the York County Sheriff contract in conjunction with the town of Shapley and to raise and appropriate a hundred and fifteen thousand. For act and share of the contract deputy cost and vehicle purchase.
Okay.
Yeah, that seems fine.
Be straightforward.
Good.
Is that Thomas just said something?
No.
I'm sorry. For, and then number three, if that's the, that's if we do this, we have to do the new vehicle, right?
So we're good on two?
We're gonna make a motion on two.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, no, number two, that's with the vehicle, yeah.
Oh, that's with the.
Yes.
It's sheriff's vehicle.
Right.
So then what's number, okay.
Uh, number three is a municipal car.
Oh, we, okay, how, where do we get the sum of thirty-five thousand?
That was the, the lease amount that, um, when the code officer originally put drafts together, that's what the total was.
I thought we talked to them last week about.
We were gonna, we're gonna.
Yeah, I thought it was less.
It didn't.
I could change this.
I thought thirty-five thousand came from the idea that we're gonna be taking the old sheriff's vehicle, and so that's why we took with this now.
So these articles are not, these articles are not connected.
I'm confused, okay.
Number two is the seventy-seven thousand dollars for the sheriff deputy, our share, and our share of the car.
And that means the car. Okay.
A new car that the sheriff's department is requiring, you will have the old car, that actor and Shapley will have to sort out what they're gonna do with it.
Yeah, okay.
In the past, the sheriff's department's bought it from us, that's, number three is only the municipal car.
So then I guess I'm, I'm confused as to where the thirty-five thousand came from, 'cause I.
Um.
Thirty-five thousand originally came from when Jesus Christ stole a car, that's what he's gonna buy for a car.
That's right, no one has given him anything else, so that's the same number.
But then I thought. We talked last week with them about possibly doing a lease.
Based on his, the violation and things in front of him, I don't know what to.
Well, it says that, it has a thirty-five thousand, which is for purchase, but it also mentions a lease.
Right, the number concerned will be changed.
And so it's got, I, I don't think we're gonna make thirty-five thousand dollars in payments on a three-year lease, so I.
No.
That's the right here, lease.
Yeah, so that's why.
I suggest this, okay? Uh, see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a three-year lease for a municipal vehicle and an annual cost not to exceed some number. Which would be the twelfth, 'cause you don't wanna appropriate the whole thing now, you, you, you just want one years with the lease payments in there, so. Whatever those lease payments and, you know, at four hundred dollars, we need to find out what the number should be approximately, that would be like five thousand dollars.
Yeah, 'cause we're like, you know, thirty-five thousand, it, it should be more than fifteen thousand for three years.
I would, that's what I would do, something like that, so, so I wouldn't mention the three-year total cost, I would just say, at an annual cost of.
So we need to estimate what we believe the lease, what your, which your maximum lease monthly payment is on the twelfth, because we can't leave here tonight without a number and make the June deadline.
I think we were talking four, four hundred dollars a month, I think those are the numbers we were being thrown around last week, so say four hundred, well, here we are throwing numbers.
Plus insurance.
Hmm?
All right, shirts.
No, that won't, that won't, no.
That will, that will be the issue.
It'll be rounding.
But fuel was the only thing, but that could involve contingency.
I think we talked, yeah, we talked about that being.
Um, we can also.
I would say.
I haven't, I haven't looked at lease pricing, has, has Jason?
Yeah, he, he gave us some numbers at the last, he, like, he said that he looked at one or two, and gave, I think he said four something, it was one of the numbers that he was.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, they were four to five hundred is what he said, but he just didn't have time, so.
He said four to five hundred?
That's what the original, the first time around, he gave up.
Five would be six thousand, just put the six, and hopefully we can get it for thirty-five, three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I'll, I'll cover the gas, I really do.
Yeah, okay.
I, I, I'll, I'll roll that.
So what's the number?
Six thousand.
Six.
Six thou-.
So, you, you, do you want that supporting, there you go, or do, do you want me to read that as a motion?
Sure.
Okay, make a motion.
Kinda good.
All set?
We all set, please? Uh, I'll make a motion, uh, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a three-year lease for a municipal ve- vehicle. At an annual cost not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Second, all in favor? It's a good idea, Tom.
There you go.
I was a little confused.
Well, I saw thirty-five, I, I just, I just, I don't know.
Okay. Uh, freedom of information request.
Uh, we received a freedom of information request from Rollin Waterhouse, uh, specific information looking for, um. Request municipal warrants for the years two thousand and six through two thousand and fifteen.
Is, um, didn't we do one last week for that?
Last week we did, um, nineteen ninety through two thousand and six.
Okay, okay, so it's, I, okay, just wanted to, I just.
Okay. That's an informational item, right?
Yes, we will, okay, do it just to see what happened.
Okay, yeah, well, I guess we are down to public comment, everybody gonna comment? Yep, yep, come on up.
Steve, one question, uh, you, the only question I have is, is about this car. I don't think there was enough information that nearly was thrown out to us to understand what the real cost is gonna be. They threw a number out there saying, I looked at one, because when you lease a car, you're gonna have some sort of a down payment, whether it be twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars. You're gonna have a monthly payment, and you're gonna put the asset in, so I think that's six thousand, it's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit one, six thousand by the time you're done.
Well, we got one, yeah, a little one.
I, I really think that really they ought to go out and do a little more digging and understanding what the real cost is gonna be like, we were talking about with the fire problem. Bring, bring a, a presentation, you know.
Can't you get them without a down payment?
You can.
I don't know. I've seen them without a down, I've done them without a down, but I, I don't know in this particular one, um, in, in whether they're still offering that.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I've done. Yeah, they, they offer that, and, and with, with the town's credit rating and all that.
Yeah, I know.
So they, they, they offer that, but I do agree with Steve, um, that six thousand, that, that gives you an eighteen thousand dollar, three years, eighteen thousand. And, and I would probably up that a little bit too, um, especially, uh, you know, I know gas prices have gone down, but. I think things are going up by maybe twenty percent if you do it on to exceed.
Well, you could, you could also put it on the July town meeting.
Yes, but I mean.
The open town meeting?
Yeah, I mean, this one, I don't feel so badly about it not being on a ballot, it's only a few thousand dollars, but, you know, the point's a good one, we probably should, you know, get an actual quote and. Develop it on that basis, still fine, good comment.
I think it's good, yeah.
It's five hundred dollars a month, I think it makes sense.
I, I, I.
That's what I was talking about earlier, but, but then I went with you.
Do that again.
So does that, that one?
So, okay, so not in November ballot, you're gonna vote with, uh, special town meeting with the snow plowing town. Cause just remember, we did not appropriate any money for mileage, we've been.
So is that when we're gonna take number three off then?
We took all the mileage of that, no, we're gonna put this on a ballot.
But didn't we say that the contingency, so until that, if, if.
If approved.
If approved, if that gets approved, the contingency can go with the mileage and tell, so.
Are you comfortable?
I am, I, yeah, sooner than later, yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna make a decision one way or the other, so.
So are we in favor of doing the, having a?
So you're gonna pull the municipal car off, put it with the, um, snow plowing, open town meeting.
So that means it would just number two, or which one would be number one?
So we're down to, the only town ballot question will be the sheriff. With a candidate. Okay. Now that was one.
I think it's good, though, it shows that we had good conversations. Did anyone make motion now?
Tom's thinking.
Oh, Tom's thinking, okay, she's been quiet.
Wondering if there's some way in the. No, forget it.
Go ahead.
So then I make a motion to remove, I guess technically two, or is it still third, do we remove one?
Three.
Move forward with the sheriff's department on the June ballot.
Okay, I make a motion to move forward with the sheriff's department and, um, car for the June twenty twenty-five ballot.
Rest to be determined.
Yeah, there's gonna be other question, other reasons coming up, so, yeah.
All right.
Uh-oh, all right, a second, second, all in favor?
But we have a plan, you know, but that's good.
That's a good, starting point.
Any public, any more public comment, are we all good? Okay, um, we're very motion.
I move to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-one PM, sorry.